I'd like to welcome you to St. Crey Central School District's Regular Board of Education Meeting, Monday, October twenty first, and the clock says seven oh one. So, we'll start with our first order of business. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next is our roll call. Mr. Hugh and Mr. Redman are not with us at this time. All other members are present. Was the meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was.
Okay, at this time, we have an opportunity for public comment. Do we have anyone who would like to speak?
Yes, Lynn Goss.
Could you introduce yourself?
I will. I had some other people here with me, but there was some confusion, so they went home. Anyways, I'm Lynn Goss, and I'm a parent educator here. Um, I've been with the district, this is my third year. Um, two years ago, in our meet and confer, we had discussed the possibility of forming a professional development committee. And out of that committee, we worked closely with Pat and, um, the partners that be that are forming the professional development days in hopes that more of the professional development is relevant and, um, parents feel like they can see themselves in those roles. It's still a work in progress, it is doing wonderful. Um, it's wonderful to have that voice. In that process, though, we also then started working on the job description. Um, Pat had asked us to do that. And, um, we came up with our collective voices to what our roles and responsibilities are, um, as parent educators in the district. We went from a job description that was literally three sentences, um, two of which that don't have anything to do with what we do nowadays. Um, so, we just wanted to say thank you. Um, our process, um, was ongoing over the whole year. And, um, then we kicked back to Pat, and Pat took all of those roles and responsibilities and took all of our voices and put it back into something that was one page, because our roles and responsibilities was three pages. And we wanted something that would be more fitting for job descriptions that you would send out for, um, when people apply for a new job. And so, again, we want to say thank you for the committee that we were able to form and want to continue doing the good work, but we work here on the handbook next. And so, again, thank you and thank you, Pat. Um, she's been working wonders around the building, so, thank you again.
Okay, is there a question for the speaker?
Just on behalf of the committee that the meet and confer, we're, um, really happy that what happens in those meetings can turn into something more meaningful. We appreciate the input that you had at the meeting and following up with it, with the administration.
Thank you, it's been fun. And it's funny to get other people involved, because normally, I think that without that process, we didn't want to be as involved and feel like that job description really is that. So, I think it was well worked time and the effort, and thank you again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else with public comment at this time? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our highlight on youth, and we will start with the SCC Virtual Education Presentation by Students and Staff. So, welcome.
And that podium's adjustable, there's a button on the right-hand side, lowers and raises.
I should be able to. You want me to start?
Sure.
Alright, uh, I'm Calvin, Calvin Tidel. The reason that I chose this program was traditional days at school are roughly seven and a half, eight hours. And going to the virtual program, it's only four. So, I can work and still have time to do homework and other things after school.
Hi, I'm Noah V. Brock. The reason I chose this program was because I had a friend in here. She said it was great, so, tried it out and haven't looked back since. It's helped me get through college, my senior year of high school, so, that's a plus.
My name is Devin Minder. I got expelled from the Baldwin Woodville School District in early twenty eighteen. During this time, I had multiple problems in my life, such as depression, grieving the loss of my grandma, and allowing drugs to influence my decisions. After the twenty eighteen summer, I realized that I had thrown away everything and I would no longer be able to attend any public schools. They wouldn't even look at the changes I've made or consider having me in their school because of the simple fact that I had been expelled from the previous school. In late twenty eighteen, my mom contacted the SCC Virtual Academy, and my education has been saved ever since then. The SCC Virtual Academy has helped me so much in the past year and a half. Without it, I wouldn't have been able to stay sober or keep pursuing my high school degree. The program gave me an opportunity to continue my high school education when nobody else would. And because of it, I was able to get a whole year ahead going at my own pace. I'm now a junior, finishing up my last three required credits and getting ready to start work on co- college courses. I wouldn't have been able to get above a ninth grade IQ if it weren't for this school. I just wanted to thank and appreciate everybody who was a part of this program.
Stephanie?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
So, we just wanted to do a quick update on enrollment. And where we're at, uh, last year at this time, we had a hundred and three students opening enrolled in. This year, we have a hundred and fifty-six. So, we're up substantially with those students. And then, resident students, we had twenty last year at this time, and we have twenty-six this year. So, we're up fifty-nine kids from where we were last October, which feels like a really big gain for us. So, kids like, like these boys, you know, doing great things every day. So, we just wanted to touch base and let you know what's happening with the charter.
For tracking purposes, is, do you consider everyone on, on pace to graduate and, and in a, maybe not in the time that they may have, otherwise, maybe earlier, maybe, maybe later, but everyone is tracked as to their, their pace?
They are, and they don't all finish on the four-year track.
Mm-hmm.
And we know that going in, a lot of those kids coming to us are so behind that we're doing our best to get them done in five or six if possible. So, um, we do the best that we can for those, for those kids, and most of them are on track.
But they can see light at the end of the tunnel, even if they're on a longer than four-year?
Yes, yeah, we, we allow them to work over the summer. You know, we really don't take a break to try to give them the opportunity to finish out and get that to finish.
Well, I guess I had a question for our three gentlemen, and, uh, I know the three of you, uh, are enjoying the program. Have you thought about your future plans and what do you, uh, want to do after, uh, you finish, uh, the academy with the diploma?
Yes, actually, I'm gonna be attending WITC in New Richmond to do, uh, body and chest repair and maybe small engine.
Uh, I'm attending WITC, and I'm going there to be an accountant, so, hopefully that checks out.
My goal is to get a few college credits in high school and then go to U of M and something in the mental health department.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, nice work, it takes a lot of courage to come up and speak in front of a bunch of people too, so we appreciate that.
We have one more joining us.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
So, I'm just, um, I'm just, I'm sorry. It's okay, we're glad you found us.
Hi, everybody, I'm so sorry. Um, my, I left late and, which is pretty on brand for me. And my dad brought me to the wrong location and then I can't, I can't even spot it. This has been quite the hectic day. So, uh, before I get start, uh, get started, I just wanted to thank you guys for, um, first allowing us to have a, um, an online, uh, system. This has worked really well for you guys, and it's worked really well for me. Um, and Stephanie and Autumn are both absolutely wonderful. Um, they're the best, I love them dearly. I am, uh, both a quote-unquote gifted student and a quote-unquote problem student. I've been labeled as both. When I was in elementary school, I was in the gifted system. Um, and then, in middle school, um, things changed. I changed, I went through a serious bout of depression and derealization that basically made me feel like nothing around me was real. And this led me to not do very well in a school setting. So, uh, my grades dropped, and very quickly, I saw a change in how the people around me treated me and how the teachers, um, staff treated me, how my parents treated me. Um, my grades reflected to a lot of people how I was, my worth. And obviously, that's not entirely true, we shouldn't be viewing people like that. But, um, that's how it is in a school setting, and the teachers are, um, concerned when they see someone, um, like them or like me that has lower grades maybe. Um, so, I needed a change. Um, so, I entered, uh, freshman year of high school with a new focus, I started therapy, I was, um, feeling better, not a hundred, not a hundred percent, but, um, I was feeling better. It's, stuff still wasn't working for me. Um, I was feeling better mentally, but in the school setting, it just wasn't working. I couldn't turn stuff in on time. Like I mentioned, I'm not very punctual. So, uh, while my, uh, test scores were still high, I still wasn't able to get stuff in on time. So, my dad came to me at the end of sophomore year, and he said, listen, there's this system that I hear about, online school, and I think it would be a good idea for you. And so, very, very last minute, I decided to do it. And it, quite frankly, it saved me. Online school has been fantastic, I would not be where I am without it. It's, works very flexibly. Um, so, what I've been doing this year is I've been doing, um, my classes in a block system. So, um, I'm doing my classes one at a time, instead of focusing on like six classes at once, which is fantastic. I'm a senior now, to be fair. Um, and, uh, it's just, it's been absolutely wonderful, it's very flexible. And there is no penalty for, um, or minimal penalty, I should say, sorry, for turning stuff in late, because the dates are so flexible. So, that works really well for me, because I'm punctual, or I'm not very punctual, excuse me. Um, but it also works really well for students who are working. I have a friend, um, who is also in la- online school, and she's currently trying to balance her school with her work. Um, and so, there are some days where she just straight up can't, can't work on her schoolwork because she has, she's scheduled to work. Um, and so, for kids like that, where work is their number one priority, online school works fantastically for them. And for me, while I'm trying to get back on my feet still, um, this is a really great way for me to sort of get back into the swing of things without having to deal with the pressure of public school. And, um, so, yeah, um, I didn't say my name, I'm so sorry. Um, uh, my name is Natala Leezen, um, I'm a senior. Um, uh, that's about it. So, I want to thank you for, um, allowing us to do this, allowing me to do it, allowing these boys to do it. Um, it's helped us a lot. Um, and once again, Stephanie's been absolutely fantastic, Autumn's been fantastic, St. Crey, um, Central High School's been fantastic. I transferred here from New Richmond. Um, and I still, this year, I'm still participating in some, some of New Richmond's activities that they allow me to. I'm in the school play, which is part of the reason I was late, I was coming from practice. Uh, and I am allowing, I'm also, all of us are allowed to participate in, uh, stuff through the high school, as I'm sure you guys are aware. Um, so, we've done some field trips. Um, I toured two colleges, which was awesome, um, through the, um, the online school system. And that was fantastic, because I'm gonna be real, I'm gonna be honest with you, I wouldn't have done it otherwise, I just wouldn't have been able to find the time. Um, but that was wonderful, and that got me started on the path to finding my colleges. So, um, this system has allowed me to, um, really kind of heal from the stuff I went through in middle school. And, um, it's given me lots and lots of new opportunities to better myself and, um, to get ready for the future, which is really, um, what we should be striving for, for all of our high school students. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'd thank all of you. Uh, it's, uh, great to hear the, uh, how well you're doing. You know, it was a hope that the, uh, the school board, uh, gave the okay to start the school, that we would be able to help the, uh, develop an opportunity for the unconventional students. And give them an opportunity to, uh, complete their education. I know our board has felt for many, many years that no student should be left behind. So, we're glad that you're doing, uh, successful work, and we hope for the best for your future. So, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the next item, we have a presentation from our SCC TRAP team. So, welcome, uh, congratulations.
All right, well, thank you for having our team in. I'm gonna let these guys start out, and then I'll finish up and, and fill in any, any gaps or any blanks so they can introduce themselves, and then I'll have some of the rest of our team stand up here just a little bit.
So, I'm Kellen Roseboom, I'm a freshman this year at, uh, the great University of Minnesota. I am studying animal science. And on behalf of the SCC TRAP team, I would like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to share what our team has accomplished this year. I've been on the team, I was on the team, I'm alum, I'm a great alumni of St. Crey Central now. So, yeah, I was on the team from oh-eight to twenty eighteen, so, ten years. And, uh, it was a certain highlight of mine to participate and represent our school and community. Since its beginning, the SCC TRAP team has seen countless successes from individuals shooting perfect twenties, fifties, and even greater. We strive for excellence each and every time we head to the line. We allow our members from sixth grade to twelfth grade to join. Hunter safety training is required, and we shoot twenty and twelve-inch shotguns. From the inception, the FFA TRAP team has worked to stress three important principles in the following order. Safety, this is our number one priority, it has always been and always will be. Uh, secondly, we want our members to have fun. It is great to post a good score, but if you're not having fun while doing it, it's, the score won't feel as good. And third, marksmanship. Uh, learning to be a good marksman takes time, lots of time, and we continue to get better each time. But if you fail to promote safety and you're not having fun, the score in the end won't matter as much. Page two. We are unique in the way we have both a fall and spring season. Members can learn both after meeting some basic criteria, such as posting weekly scores, shooting an average of nineteen each week, and not inferring any policy infractions. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Brock Thorson to discuss our spring twenty nineteen season.
Hi, my name is, uh, Brock Thorson, which was already mentioned. But, uh, I would like to share some of the highlights of the twenty nineteen spring season. It, uh, started out really strong, even though the weather kinda, kinda hindered that through there. And, uh, we had a lot of members who posted a perfect score, which is twenty-five. And, uh, some even went on to post two or three. We are awarding, we award Top Guns each season in the spring. The following were our award winners. Seniors Abby Betcher and Ashley Mann, juniors John Miles and Dylan Sweet, and freshman Ethan Betcher. Ethan still managed to shoot a fifty straight in the beginning of our fall season. Uh, Top Gun Middle School went to me with a twenty-two point seven average. Top Gun High School went to John Miles with a twenty-three point five average. Top Gun Female went to Abby Betcher with a twenty-three point three average. And, uh, Top Gun Male overall went to John Miles with a twenty-three point five average. Uh, top ten in conference for male was, uh, myself in sixth place, Ethan Betcher in fourth place, John Miles in third place, who also was the, who was the conference champion for the male. Top ten in conference for female, uh, Ashley Mann in fourth, and Abby Betcher in first, who was the conference champion. And Wisconsin State High School played Target League, top ten in Wisconsin, we had Abby Betcher in third place for overall, and John Miles in fifth place overall.
Good job, Brock. You're learning to read really well.
The student system must be working.
My name is Justin Brock. The state tournament group, our best, our best showing, showing to, yeah. We not only had Ethan Betcher and John Miles placed in the top ten individually, we, we placed second overall in the varsity, varsity, uh, competition, I think. That was an exciting time to know that the hard work we had, that, the hard work we had all paid off, put in, paid off. In order, in order to qualify for national tournaments requires a higher, higher level of performance. As a result, we had eight members make that happen. Of those five were able to compete as a team and individually. Kellen Roseboom, Abby Betcher, John Miles, Ethan Betcher, and Brock Thorson posted some amazing scores. Once again, the countless hours of practice paid off. When we, when we achieved a fourteenth overall national tournament in Michigan, it was a great honor to bring that back to Wisconsin. As we, as we were also the highest Wisconsin team, it's sometimes fun to know that other teams go hoping to be St. Crey Central. We are honored to represent both of, both our community and state and take up, and take our role and keep the place, and keep that place seriously.
Hello, I'm Abby Betcher, I'm a new alumni. And I had been, I was on the TRAP shooting team for my sophomore year in high school until last year, being senior year. And it was really exciting to watch all of our athletes improve each season and watch their confidence grow and their scores get consistently better. We really could have done it, well, with all the people that put in countless hours as volunteers, coaches, score, scorekeepers, mentors, and supporters. A special thanks goes to all the individuals that really worked hard to really put this team together and to make it as competitive, and again, like, the number one team that finished, that finished for Wisconsin in the national competition this summer, which includes Jeff Thomas, Steve Weber, Mel Warren, Greg Betcher, Dave Thorson. And thank you to, again, to Mary Abode for being wonderful with our social media as well. And River Falls Sportsman Club that allows us to do this sport that we all really love. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, so as much as some of our shooters back here don't like to speak, I think that's one of the nice parts about doing all this. So, it gives them a chance to, to grow, not just in their marksmanship skills, but their ability to present to a group of individuals, thus giving them that many more, what I call, soft skills, workplace skills, which I think is really, really important. Um, we just want to say thank you to the school board and to the community for continually supporting us in this endeavor. It's not a cheap endeavor, um, it's pretty pricey, if you can ask any of the parents sitting back here, um, the cost of not just acquisition of a firearm, but the countless number of shells that we, we tend to go through, uh, usually on a weekly basis, not just boxes, but cases. Um, and if you've ever purchased a case of shells, you know that those can, can get pretty, pretty pricey. But, uh, they definitely come, the, the members come forward each and every week with a desire to really want to do better and to improve their scores. And even if they're not doing as well as they want, they come back that next week with a happy face on again and go at it again. And I think that's kind of a testament to them, as well as to all of our, our volunteer coaches. I couldn't do this by myself. Um, we didn't mention Pam Miles, uh, she's, she's kinda one that really helps get our messaging out. She does a great job communicating with our team, um, making sure that we're where we need to be, when we need to be. Um, I don't have enough hours in the day to do it all, so I certainly appreciate her and all the help that she's given us along the way. Obviously, her, her son, John, is on the team, he's actually taking night classes, so he could not be with us to, to join us. So, he's actually furthering his, his interest in maybe more of the social services side of things, but we're pretty excited that he's doing that. Um, but she's gonna be leading us, and I think we've already recruited another person, uh, right here to, uh, to, to pick up some of those reins. What we've got up here is, um, a team photo. These are our, our state individuals who helped get us to second in state. That's the highest we've ever placed in state, um, that's at a varsity level. Um, we were basically one or two clay shy of hitting first. And I have a feeling we've got some numbers back here who are gonna really give it their all in the spring to, to try to get to that number one spot. With regard to nationals, it's a phenomenal experience. That's all I can say, it's pretty awesome to watch all these kids. It's amazing. This is our national team. Like I said, they're all here, um, except for, um, Ethan and John. Ethan will be around for a while, at least I hope he'll be around for a while. Plan is for him to kinda take the helm a little bit too. Um, but we've got some amazing young shooters back here, and I know that, uh, we've got a bright future ahead of us. So, you're welcome to, uh, pass these around if you wanna look at them, otherwise, they're gonna be at the high school. Um, we're gonna try to get these displayed somewhere in the walls so that we can continue our tradition. Just like all of our other awesome sports teams, we're gonna continue the tradition of representing our, uh, our members on this team as well as we can.
Just, uh, just so if you've seen this, every one of these patches, like yours, they're all like all twenty-fives, there's a fifty on here, that's in a row. So, this is Brock's. This is how many perfect rounds he had. And Brock, what are you, a freshman?
Yeah.
As a freshman, this is how many he has already. I mean, I showed you the skill set. Wind, weather, everything is a factor, that's how focused they have to be. And like I say, Brock's, it's pretty impressive what you have here. Ethan and John, they're just flooded. So, I mean, it's.
Can make a vest, seriously. Maybe, yeah. But, yeah, by their senior years, yeah.
I know both of the exact amount of batches they have, yeah.
But that's just a testament of how committed they are and how perfect they take it. I mean, you know, as an, you know, think of wrestling as an individual sport, but you do it as a team, you know, you compete individually. How many of them get a perfect score that many times? You know, just, just so if you see them, that's what you understand what they are, it's impressive. I, I couldn't do it.
I couldn't either. The only time we do not go to the line is in lightning. So, it, it could be hailing sideways, and they have to be on the line shooting. And that's pretty impressive, that's really impressive. I've sat under the nice little canopy's keeping score and just saying, golly, I'm glad I'm not out there trying to keep my shooting glasses clean and my, you know, ear protection in while being able to still focus on that clay coming out of any direction out of the house. Uh, we wanna encourage all of you, uh, this is our last, uh, week to shoot for fall season, so Thursday will be our last score night. Currently, we're in first in our conference, I don't think we're probably gonna lose that. We would have to pretty much post no scores at all on Thursday for that to happen. It, it's, it's quite a testament, um, to, to where we started and how far we've come. Yeah. If you have any questions for our members, you certainly can fire away, no pun intended.
I have one more comment, actually. Matt, could you stand up for a second? Um, pull for Greg, I'm Greg. I have stage four cancer. And, uh,
He's been a coach of ours for five years, six years?
Since the beginning.
Since the inception.
Yep.
Uh, my TRAP shooting family started this awareness, I guess we'll call it. And the support from each and every one of these people has been absolutely amazing.
We call ourselves a family for a reason.
Yeah, we're, we're a family. So, if this didn't exist through the school, we'd still do it. Because it's, it's grown more into, like, like you've been saying, family is the only word I can use. And the support has been, and from the school too, from St. Crey Central, the whole school. And the support has been, and from the school too, from St. Croix Central, the whole school. Has been so impressive, um, and I'm winning.
Well, I'd love to congratulate all of you. Uh, I've been following it for quite a while now. I get reports from my cousins who have kids that compete at my nominee in Ellsworth. They feel like they're doing very well, but they're always chasing St. Croix Central, so.
And we like to keep it that way.
So, no, it's, it's phenomenal. I, you know, I'm just following the, the shooting of how many twenty fives in a row, is fifties in a row, uh, seventy-five in a row, you know, or going a hundred.
Two hundred.
You know, a hundred, two hundreds, uh, just they don't miss. You know, seeing the difference of what a, a miss of one or two and a one or two in a, you know, in a flight, uh, it's phenomenal, so.
For instance, we had two shooters at the state tournament shoot ninety-nines. And Ethan took third and John took four, shooting a ninety-nine. So if you miss one, one takes you, it doesn't take you out of, out of it, but mentally you have to sit there and tell yourself, I can't miss. You know, you can miss a tackle in football, you can miss a spike in volleyball, but if you miss one target in trap shooting, it can put you out of the run. So it's, uh.
But, you know, just their, just their ability to recover after a miss is phenomenal, so. I want to congratulate all of you for the wonderful, uh, wonderful performance and hoping at the very least, uh, you're having fun with it. Glad they're learning firearms safety. That's, that's an important factor.
That's why safety is always our number one. Always will be, won't ever change.
I want to thank you for coming tonight and, uh, congratulations and I hope the success continues, so.
And you can follow our team. Uh, we actually have about three hundred and fifty followers of our team on Facebook, uh, with.
The national coach follows us, yeah.
Who actually recognized, I was at a gun fair in, in Minnesota this fall. He actually recognized our team right away. So, um, St. Croix Central is definitely on the map in the shooting sports world. Um, we are the target of every school in the state of Wisconsin right now. Um, and, uh, at the national level, we have a lot of people that, that have heard of our team and, and come up and approach us and talk to us. This team has had national range safety officers come up and compliment them, not only on their, um, accuracy and how they function on the gun line, but the safety practices that they follow as well, both on and off, uh, gun range. That doesn't happen very often. Most of the time when your range safety officers approach you, it's to, to tell you need to make a change. Uh, we have been approached two years in a row about how well, uh, oil machine our team is, uh, and how safe they are and how, how they follow all of the, uh, trap etiquette rules to a T. So they, they get complimented at that level. These kids, um, a lot of these kids are non-traditional athletes. Um, you know, they, they, they may never be able to, to be successful on the football field or, um, on the softball field, the baseball field, but, um, they, they perform at an exceptional level, um, on the track field. And we have an amazing, uh, group of coaches that are able to take these kids who have an interest and move them through the ranks to, to perform at a national level.
Volunteer coaches.
Yes. Um, so we actually have a coach that is, uh, one step below an Olympic coach. Um, that, that, that's the level of coaching we have, um, and, and all these people are, are volunteers. But, um, these kids, uh, just put their heart and soul into this and really, it, it is a family because people don't drop their kids off at gun range and, uh, pick them up when they're, they're done shooting for the night. They're there the whole night. We have grandparents there, we have aunts and uncles there, we have siblings there. Um, it, it is a family event and everything we do, we do as a family. We go to Nationals, it's our, it's a family vacation for the five families that are there for Nationals. I mean, we, that, that's how we approach it. We, we do everything as a family.
Clearly the coaching and family support is there too, and thank you all for that.
Well, thank you. Congratulations. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
These are the things we're true to make.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Moving on with the next item on our agenda, comments from our, uh, board members and superintendent. Starting with an update from our communications planning committee. So, committee?
Sure, go ahead. We're, um, we finished our next communication postcard. We finalized it today, changed one thing. Um, and it has all the dates for the conferences and things in December, so we think we're then going to wait and put another one out. Like, put it together during December and Jan, and we'll put it out in January. Uh, but it looks good. I don't know. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I mean, it gets, has Veterans Day programs, the school play and all the holiday concerts in December, so. Thinking, don't need to have a December one. This one's really going to be in November. It'll come out, uh, this week perhaps. Yeah.
Updates on general school, like the, um, the enrollee in and out and the safety grants are on there. And then we decided to add the, um, holiday.
And holiday angels. Just thought that was fitting with the rest of it, timely versus our top ten goal. Thought that was more geared towards the community. They want to support our kids and families.
Okay, anything else? Thank you for doing that and, uh, look forward to reading the next, uh, communication, uh, postcard, so. Thank you for doing that. Next is, uh, update on our, uh, staff appreciation bagel breakfast. John is not here, but, uh, I'd like to thank him, uh, for helping gather that, uh, all the information and taking care of that. I think everybody got the note from John of what we owe him, uh, for that. And so I know he won't be here at this meeting or the next meeting, so if you could maybe drop it in the mailbox to him, uh, that'd be appreciated. And I think it was well received and I've seen a couple, had a couple of comments and thank yous from, uh, the staff regarding that, uh, breakfast. I don't know if anybody else heard anything, so. Okay. And moving on to the next item, uh, we have a presentation from our.
Can I just make a, uh, take a point of personal privilege and honor? Uh, last week, uh, my son, Tom, received the Presidential Award of Excellence for, uh, math teacher. So it's the highest award that an educator can get. And so he was in Washington DC, so. One, one teacher from each state, and so he was a representative from Montana.
No way.
And he teaches first grade. He teaches math. So, pretty cool. Really congratulations, Tom.
Pretty good. Congratulations.
He works hard and he loves teaching kids. You know, I've talked before about him being a student of how kids learn and, you know, and he's really acknowledged as a, uh, educator of educators. His sort of special, uh, thing is something called productive struggle, where kids, you know, struggle to solve problems rather than just getting in the formula and he's really, he's actually spoken at, uh, national math teacher conferences on that. It's kind of cool they've got this recognition, so. Pretty neat.
Congratulate him for us.
St. Croix Central, yeah. And St. John's, actually. John is here, but Frank.
Okay, next. Next is our high school marching band presentation. Welcome.
Hello. Is it HDMI? Yep. Perfect. Hello, everybody. Um, my name is, uh, Sean Conway. This is my third year teaching high school band in the district, uh, fifth year overall. Um, with me, I have, uh, senior Grace Hanson, who served as our drum major for marching band this year. Um, we wanted to take a little bit of time to tell you, um, and I'm sure you probably noticed that we've done a couple of different things with the marching band this season. Um, and wanted to kind of give you a bit of a, uh, kind of a highlight reel and a bit of a summary of some of the successes that we've had, some of the great things that our, that our students are doing. Um, so to kind of start here, uh, very, very brief history, kind of the way things were when, when I first got here to sort of set the stage. The band program, the way it was set up and still is largely, is that there were, uh, two separate classes set up for marching band. There was the third hour band and then, uh, third hour freshman band and the sixth hour, uh, sophomore, junior, senior band. And, which is great, that works perfectly fine for us in those situations, but when it came time to learning the field show for homecoming, it presented a bit of a challenge when you had a quarter of your kids in one class that had no idea what they were doing and all of the other people that knew everything else somewhere else. And you had to try and put together a coordinated production for the entire community, um, with those two groups not meeting. So we ended up using homecoming as that week, um, in all the other like chaos and celebrations and recognitions that we have as kind of our way to get everybody together a couple times to be able to learn that, you know, freshmen bless their hearts, like. I, I just think we remember walking, getting all of them sent in their spots, walking over to a different section, trying to get them set up. And then I turned around and they've all walked away and they're talking with their friends again. So you can imagine how like being able to have some of that upperclassman leadership there, uh, was, um, was very much desired. Another part about that was the, uh, marching band was at the time a required class, which has its pros and downs. Pros, the ensemble is huge, uh, but the downside is you have some people that, you know, are there but are just not interested in doing, feel something like they love band, but they just don't care to be out on the football field. And that's totally okay. Like, I would much rather have, um, you know, marching bands a short part of the year. I don't want to sacrifice someone's love for music by requiring them to be in something that they despise. But the other challenge with that, if it being required is, uh, the first year I came in, uh, Colin Nelson was the quarterback and was also a tenor sax player in the band. He, you know, for the first part of the year, like, he didn't learn the show with us and we didn't push him to learn the show because when halftime came around at the homecoming game, he was going to step off the field anyway. Because he had to go to their halftime meeting, like, we weren't going to pull the, the starting quarterback from, from that for our field show. Um, so with that in mind, we wanted to take a couple of different steps to be able to see what we could do to push this forward and, and, and take it to another, another level, another step, um, for us. And so, um, s- some of the reason that we wanted to do that is just like the history that we have of, um, marching band in our community and just kind of the tradition that we have with that at our schools. Um, you know, when Mr. Helmick was cleaning out cabinets, he was able to find a whole bunch of old pictures that I've been, uh, scanning in. But, you know, we can see old uniforms formations. I believe that one on the right, uh, bottom right is in, in, uh, Glenwood City in a parade, and then the one on the left is in, is that the elementary school now, I think? I don't know, but, uh.
It'd been the middle school.
Or the middle school stage. Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's been a large part of who we are as a district and, you know, it, it is one thing that I wanted to be able to bring us back to as like kind of another point of pride for us as a, as a district. The other part of it is the community engagement that we get with having marching band. Um, I often tell the kids that the biggest crowds we're going to have all year are going to be at those Robertson Hammond, uh, Community Day parades. Because marching band is the only concert unit that we have that's mobile. Basically, everything else is passive. Like, we have to get everybody to come to our concerts, um, or come to, like, if they want to see the pep band, get pep band, they have to come to a game. This is the only chance that we have to go to where people are and kind of represent our school in that fashion musically. The other reason is it's, um, for, for band, it's one of the best things you can do for kids. Because you have a ton of different opportunities for, um, a lot of students that, you know, some are very good in sports, some are not, and that's okay. We take all of them no matter what. Everyone is a starter. Everyone has a role. There are no bench warmers in marching band or band in general. And the other great thing about this is students get an opportunity to, um, you know, give up a little bit of themselves, a little bit of their personal, like, their, their, their individualness to be a part of something greater than they could achieve, um, by themselves. And so I think there are a lot of lessons to learn in that in addition to, um, the value of having everybody working and pushing towards a common goal, um, and, and working to achieve that together. So in addition to the opportunities we have for student leadership, um, with like Grace, uh, and some of the others in years that we've had to be able to lead their peers, which is not necessarily a situation they get into many other curricular classes. Um, so taking steps forward, this year we moved a lot of things around. First, we had to solve the schedule issue, so. We removed band from being a required class, so we had to provide an alternative. So students that did not want to be in band, they were, um, or did not want to be in marching band, signed up for the Fall Wind Ensemble class, which worked as just like every other curricular ensemble. And in fact, we had a concert on, uh, October sixth. We were able to get three concerts, uh, three pieces put together. And I'm working with Mr. Helmick to even see if, uh, at the middle school, we can find a way to collaborate with sixth grade band and make that an early season, uh, concert for those beginning band students. And also find a way to tie in a way that, uh, students can be involved in band and other activities as they go through school. So that's opened up some really cool possibilities for us. But the other thing that's helped with this is thank, thank you to the, uh, Dino for making the schedule magic work. Um, but we were able to get it set up where, uh, band was either fifth or sixth hour, which means for whatever the kid, student had that, um, fifth hour, opposite of that would be lunch. So during the school year, what we just did actually today is, because we don't need to do ba, uh, marching band all the way until January, it's a little too cold, um, that allows us the flexibility to hit the end of our performing season, transition students into the, um, great bass ensembles, freshman or symphonic band, and then begin working on our music for the upcoming winter concert. So we're able to not really use it all within there. And we can make adjustments as we need to, um, throughout the year. So that was a huge thing. The other big thing we did is we wanted to make sure that what they were doing was seen as important and valuable, you know? When we pick out football uniforms or volleyball uniforms, you know, we're not looking for last year's thing. We're looking for, you know, we want to put our kids in the best stuff that we can find. And so we found a kind of affordable way to do this. We worked with a uniform design company and we were able to get this. Let me grab the, Grace has got it. I don't think we'll have her model it, but, you know, we were able to get, um, something that kind of represented our, uh, kind of the old school colors, but also be something that isn't going to be heavy wool, that'll work in the summer for us. It's machine washable and easy to take care of, um, and has some other cool little highlights, like capes and things, you know? And also that when they wear it and they put it on, they're going to feel really good about what they're doing. So we were able to do that, I think, really, really well. After that, we also had outreach. We got a Facebook and Instagram page going. I don't know if we're as popular as the trap team yet. But, you know, we're working on building that, um, and using that as a means to connect with, uh, parents and community members as well about concerts and other events that we. connect with parents and community members as well about concerts and other events that we have, our meat raffle that we have or our burger night, excuse me, that we have on November fourth. So trying to use that as a way to build our group. And then also we had it seemed really weird to do all of these things, take all of these steps, try and do more and then not give the students more opportunities to perform throughout the year. So there are a number of, we're actually in a very, very good place for this kind of situation with River Falls, Hudson and Baldwin all around us and even with Cumberland, just a little bit farther north to get the chance to perform our show a couple of different times. So we actually went to Baldwin Woodville, hosted a marching band festival that we attended and performed an exhibition. And then there was also the figure contest that we went to, which was located in Minneapolis, Minnesota at US Bank Stadium, where we performed our our field show. Sorry, forgot to say if there is, but you also make t-shirts, so if you want one, let me know and we'll pony to our store. So some of the cool things we were able to do this year here. I have that for everybody, I'm sorry, but you'll so you'll get to share and pretend. But what I have here are kind of, I have the little coordinate sheets that kind of show where you're supposed to go on the field. So when we're talking about some of the, you know, weird ways that you can have literacy in the classroom, the big picture packets that you guys have, those are so big packets you got, those are the pictures that every kid gets, those are what the on the field. No, that's what they're doing on the field. The little paper sheets, you can see at the top, it's got a letter and a number highlighted. So that would be like A seven, that would be your person that you're supposed supposed to find on those pictures. And those words there basically give you your coordinates on the field. So if you haven't had any marching band practice before, this might be complete gibberish to you. As you can imagine, for the last couple of years, this has also been complete gibberish to a lot of our students. But we were actually able to make significant gains in that. So with the forty students we had, we not only learned how to decipher all of these coordinates, all of these sheets, and that also winds up with all of their music, by the way. So they're coordinating three or four different things all at the same time. My first year, we did three chart, three charts here, this, and then go back. The year after that, we formed five boxes, moved around and then wrote SEC. This year, the kids learned thirty-seven total pages of drill. It completely blows away anything that we've done previously. We've also gotten, you know, I happened to find a VHS tape where they unveiled the last time they got new uniforms, which was nineteen ninety-two. And so that makes twenty-seven years for new uniforms, since new uniforms. And I've heard this was, I think Director Hugh mentioned that he had talked with you or somebody, that they hadn't been on the field since like doing a show, like developed show since like nineteen eighty-three. So somebody might need to fact check me on that date, but then that puts us at thirty-six years since we've done anything like this before to this extent. And then the other great thing, Richard, if you wanna chime in at all, but when like when we were out at these events, kind of the atmosphere and the way the kids carried themselves was very, very exactly what you want them to do to represent our our schools and our district. I know I was very proud, especially our first time out at the gate with all of these things. I don't know if you wanna chime in or heard you been as a parent in this situation.
It was just, I don't, I mean, just talking to my son, like after just performing that halftime show, just the adrenaline, he was so poked up and excited. And then this US Bank thing was like we would, it it kind of was unreal when you were there doing it, but it was so exciting and they were just so into it. It was snowing and so freezing cold and they were in those uniforms, listening to Mr. Conway just intently. Like they were so excited to do this. It was just a wonderful experience and.
I got choked up.
Yeah.
I'll be honest.
Really excited.
It's really amazing. And a short story, I think you were not in his interview committee, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yes, I was.
To sort of see you go up there and leave with that vision that we had was amazing.
And so Tricia talked about the snow a little bit. So the US Bank Stadium event, we were at the Youth in Music competition. We were one of thirty-five participating groups from all across the upper Midwest. You can see us warming up right outside of the stadium there. When we were warming up, she's not kidding, thirty-three degrees, thirteen mile an hour winds with gusts. Poor Director Hugh was actually out there directing buses and traffic, like he loves this, it's actually killing him, I think. I mentioned I was doing this, it's killing him that he's not here to
Yes, it is.
Go nuts about marching band for a little bit. Yeah, light snow.
And I would say the community too. So we were practicing and Hudson was practicing and Baldwin was practicing. And they, the groups waved to each other, but then they all sat and supported and watched each other. It was, that part was really awesome too. We weren't competing against them. We were all, you know, we're for each other. I thought that was wonderful.
Yes. So kids got to like walk through the tunnel, step onto the field. I don't know how many of you are biking fans, but I always liked going there. And then on the field with the pro numbers with the biking and everything. The kids were a little upset that I didn't let them know ahead of time that there was gonna be a video camera and a Jumbotron in use, so that kind of caught them off guard a little bit there. They got over it pretty quickly. And then this was kind of what Tricia was referring to, but you can see there on that top picture that every, every, every festival that happens, they do a drum major retreat and so they bring out basically every group that's participated. And this was actually only half of the people from the day. You can't even see all of them on there because they're stretching so far in the field. But it was just really cool the way that it worked out and we were able to get from left to right on that top picture Baldwin, Hudson and us lined up and Grace may not have been the tallest one out there, but she was definitely the last one you would wanna pick and fight. She was, she was intense. It was so cool.
Trying really hard.
And one of the reasons that I wanted to make sure to have Grace here was not as just like a thing to make sure that like I'm staying calm through this whole thing. But Grace was actually recognized as a scholarship winner from Youth in Music. There were, from the thirty-five bands, there were a hundred and ten total applicants and it was limited to seniors only. And Grace was selected, one of the eight selected from that whole host of host of groups. So she earned actually a five hundred dollar scholarship. I don't know what the parameters were to be.
Further music education, so I could use it for college or for like lessons or something like that.
You can talk to the.
Yeah, so I wrote an essay for Youth in Music about how music has kind of shaped who I am. I talked mainly about our SEC band program. I've been here since the beginning, sixth grade, so six years now. I definitely will say that marching band is the coolest thing that I have been involved with and I've done it all. Like I went to Disneyland last year. I've been in all our jazz ensembles. I've done honors band and all of them, but definitely marching band is my favorite thing that I've done at SEC so far. And yeah, I'm really honored to be a part of it. So thank you guys for supporting me and yes.
What instrument do you play?
Alto sax.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you're gonna do music in college?
Yes.
As a major or just participant or?
I think I'm just going to participate. My passion is writing, which was wonderful for this being an essay. But I'm definitely going to continue with music throughout my life.
Do you know what school you wanna go to yet?
I'm going to UW Oak Claire.
Awesome.
We watched them perform there too. They were very excited.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had, that was kind of a mind blowing thing for the kids because Oak Claire's marching band is now up to four hundred and seventy-five people. So it was really funny to tell them that there were more, more kids in that band than there were in their entire high school. That was a bit of an eye opening thing for them. But I also do wanna take another, another minute to like just recognize how outstanding and fantastic Grace has been as a drum major for us this year. To be willing to take a complete and total chance on something like this, really not entirely knowing which way it's going to go, trusting that it's gonna be at least okay. And there were a lot of times where we didn't realize how green we were in some situations, but instead of, you know, getting into those situations and tensing up and shutting down, she was just like confident, bold, went for it. Like we went over how to do a salute, maybe fifteen minutes before she actually had to do the salute. And you would have, you would have thought she was just doing it for her entire life. She was kind of the emotional and emotional role model for all of the people there and definitely demonstrated what we want everybody else to be when they come through. Like she set a very hard bar for what drum majors to come will have to be. So I'm extremely thankful for you being in that spot.
Tricia, she's our first then, right? Like since eighty-three or whenever that was?
First in a different role than it was in the past. Yeah, I would say. First in this, first in this new, this new way of doing things. My first year, Annika and Michaela Asser were period or Jason. But I still helped conduct with things. Last year, just to kind of get a clean slate for everything and start fresh, I just did it all myself. And so it was a little bit of a like nervous handing it over, but I was, Grace was like the one person that I was not nervous about handing it over to at all, so. On the pun, but kind of the next steps, the things that we're looking to try and do as we go forward is we really wanna continue to build on the success that we had this year. Kids, like Tricia said, kids were on a high coming off the field after each of their performances. You would have thought, I told them we had snow days for the rest of the school year after they saw Oak Claire and they were heading home. They were singing jingle bells as we walked back to the buses. They were just so jazzed from everything we were doing. It was unbelievable. And because of that, they are invested in increasing the number of people involved. They've already talked to me about trying to find a time to go down to the middle school and talk to the eighth graders about getting in it and really kind of building that connection there. We've gotta continue to update some of the equipment that we have, getting the uniforms and things taken care of was a big step. We had to play a lot of Moneyball, like we were lucky that Baldwin bought new uniforms that had gray pants, so we were able to buy their black pants for like like pennies on the dollar almost for the whole thing, which was awesome. But they also came and helped us in other ways, like the white susaphone you see in the picture, that's actually one we're barring from Viking Middle School because we only have two. And we had three tuba players, which wasn't expecting to have that problem, but it's sweet. We're looking at additional performances. The kids wanted more chances to perform, so we'll see what that looks like and where we maybe go for those things. And continuing to develop a student leadership program kind of within the organization, within the marching band that can not just influence things that happen in that one quarter of the year, but then those leadership skills can transfer to what they do in their regular concert bands and then some of the other activities they're involved in, you know, trying to make it so that, you know, how many, how many more Grace Hanson's can we have in our group, basically, and how can we continue to develop that those qualities in in students? So, yeah, I have this too. If you wanna see just a little bit of what we did, I can jump. You don't have to watch the whole thing. It's not super long and I know many of you saw it at homecoming. But I will just jump towards the end where we get through. I'll jump a little bit farther than you're gonna see. We'll see if stuff where we do a little bit more movement. So. It wasn't just they did these things, but they did them in a like those are straight lines. That's also Grace conducting all of this. I have nothing to do once again.
He's right there pacing on the bottom.
Some guy on the left there, that one of the judges.
Uh, yeah, the guy standing up in yellow is giving us feedback, kind of an evaluation kind of on what we're doing. We've listened to those from the kids, basically like, we've also watched our video with the tapes going, much like football players will watch tape after a game to see what we can do, what we're doing. So right now, if you're looking at your sheets, this is like your first page. So you have, you have four more we can watch. All expectations for year, so. Yeah, thank you for your guys' time and our presentation and Grace for coming and helping.
Dr. Roy, you had mentioned kind of to keep it in perspective for us, Oak Claire had four hundred and seventy-five students in band you know, compared to the number of students at the school. Also, first, the last field performance you were thinking was about eighty-three?
Yes, and that's just what John Hugh.
Okay, so to also keep it in per- in perspective for us, what year were you born?
Nineteen ninety.
And maybe more than once a generation for the field performances in the future. I mean, is that something you're thinking you wanna continue, I mean, maybe not an every, every year thing, but to me it's.
I'd be okay with doing that more than once in my lifetime, yeah.
I'd say. Well, I also think to put in perspective, we have to realize that back in eighty-three, we had one band teacher for the entire school district. That's a lot too.
Grace, did we do anything? So I was actually a drum major in my high school band. We had a hundred and fifty in our band and they sent me to drum major, the Big Ten Drum Major Camp. And did we do anything like that to help you?
We didn't do that, but I probably wouldn't have been ready for that in all I see. I had no idea at all what I was getting into. I knew I would be directing, but other than that, I had no idea. So my version of that was pretty much band camp and it was really kind of cool to learn alongside everyone in the band. Just kind of realized that we're all on a level playing field and we're all learning together. So there was no like, I'm a senior. It was just, we're all in this together. We're gonna try to make it as good as we possibly can.
Well, congratulations on the scholarship and the award, Grace. Sean, I congratulate you and thank you for the getting the band, marching band up and rolling again. I know Dave Larson worked real hard to try and get a marching band put together and his struggle always was trying to get enough musicians to participate. And they would sign up for parades and day the parade. And they would sign up for, uh, parades, and day of the parade, half of the band wouldn't show up, so that was a struggle. And having three sons, uh, all that were, most of them are pretty good athletes, but it was always a struggle to try and keep them involved in band, but, uh, they not only had fun in band, but, uh, they also were able to drag some of their friends, other athletes in, and have a good time too, so.
These are.
I'm, I'm very appreciative that we're getting the program up and rolling again, so.
These are way more detailed sheets than the ones that I had when I was.
Oh, what, what the computer can do on that stuff, that's awesome. Like, they can even show, uh, like, the, the images of the people, like, with their legs moving and everything on the computer while they go place to place, it's pretty unreal.
Sean, did you buy the show or did you write it?
Uh, I did. So all of the music that you guys heard, that was, like, we found that on, like, a music store. Um, but all of the pictures and formations and things that they did, I wrote that.
You wrote that?
Awesome. I just wanna say thank you because from the parent of a kid that's not super into team sports, this is, you know, a team sport that he absolutely loves, so, thank you.
And I think your successful will feed into more success in marching.
Well, there's a buzz at school.
Uh, good.
You're doing it the right way, Sean.
And the daughter wants band gear, so.
Good.
Yeah.
And by the way, you won River City Stitch. Did not mean that, this whole, but, uh, River City Stitch has been really cool. We got sweatshirts, uh, hats, and hats for when it gets cold out, so, which seems to already be no rain gear right now, but, so, yeah.
Rivercitystitch.com and then just search.
Yeah, SCC bands, um, otherwise, if you find us on Facebook or whatever, I'll blast that out again soon, or you can always email, like, um, or, so. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck, Grace. Congratulations again.
Kate is.
With that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our financial reports. Starting with our treasures report.
Bank account balances as of September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, Citizen State Checking, two hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Citizen State Bank Money Market, three million twenty-three thousand one hundred forty-five dollars and eight cents. Citizens Money Market Fund, forty-six fifty-two dollars thirty-five cents. Citizen State Bank Money Market Suicide Prevention Fund, eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars eighty-two cents. Our total bank account balances of three million three hundred thirteen thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars and four cents.
Are there any questions? Do I have a motion?
To accept the treasurer's report is presented.
Second.
We have a motion, Kirk, second David, approve the treasurer's report is presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, which consists of approval of our meeting minutes for our, uh, September twenty-third meeting. Our August, or our October seventh meeting, approval of the bi-monthly bills. Uh, for, uh, October, approval of retirements, resignations. Uh, Rachel Hanson is our full-time high school, track and field assistant coach, approval of, uh, contract, uh, modifications and appointments. Uh, Carol Boisich, four-hour, uh, middle school housekeeper. Kyle Hillstead from a seven-and-a-half to an eight-hour middle school housekeeper. Teresa Sobora from a six to a seven-and-a-half hour middle school, high school housekeeper. Ron Seiler is our full-time C-team boys' basketball coach. Justin Yaren, our full-time high school track and field assistant coach. Rachel Hanson is our full-time high school track and field ed coach. Uh, Shannon, uh, Seibert, that's a seven-and-a-half hour elementary special education para. Uh, Erica Canal is our seven-and-a-half hour elementary special ed para. Sean Augustusson, uh, seven, or six and three-quarter hour elementary special ed para. I also have, uh, addition of Alicia Benzer as our full-time middle school play advisor, effective October twenty-second of this year. As well as approval of the student participation in the early college credit, uh, program for spring of twenty twenty, which is your exhibit ten E. Also, approval of the curricular modification request for students to enroll in full-time and part-time virtual ed courses for two thousand nineteen, twenty, which consists of two part-time and one full-time student for a total of three.
Who to accept is presented.
We have a motion, David, second Scott, approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item, which is our student enrollment update.
For October, we have one thousand six hundred and one students in seats. We have one hundred and fifty-six students enrolled in our virtual, uh, charter school, as Steph mentioned previously. One fifty-six as opposed to one oh three this time last year. In addition, we have twenty-six resident students full-time in our virtual school. Uh, with that said, our open enrollment in is two hundred and seventy-five kids versus out, one oh nine, for a plus net of one sixty-six.
Okay, any questions? Looks like our virtual charter school is, uh, quite successful, so. Must've had some families moving in and out based on the.
Seats.
Seats, yeah.
Downside, so.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions on, uh, the student enrollment update? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, our key work of our school board, starting with our staff's, uh, student and community recognition.
Howard said you would.
Unless you wanna read it, Kirk?
So, uh, recognition of Jeremiah Hubbard. Thank you for choosing SCC Elementary for your Eagle Scout project. Due to your commitment, hard work, and time, the children are enjoying the two Gaga pits you installed. Me and the children of SCC Elementary thank you kindly. For Heather Wester, great work in deciphering and reporting detailed and accurate student enrollment counts for both the August summer school days and the third Friday count. Your work is critical to our funding process and DPI audits, and your commitment to excellence is very appreciated. For Amy Vahada, great work in just same thing, sorry. Heather Wester and Amy Vahada for the same thing. Uh, Lori Kress also for that. Suppose I should put them all together in one, and also Tammy Worth. And Pam Katner, John Kleschold, Kim Gunnerson, all for the same thing, sorry, but helps if I lead ahead. Uh, Logan Kimberly, congratulations to your coaching staff on qualifying for the girls' state golf tournament and the girls' golf team. Congratulations to the girls' golf team for qualifying for the state tournament.
Result to the girls' golf team, uh, ended up taking third place in the state tournament, so congratulations. Thanks for taking care of that, Kirk.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you all for submit, uh, submitted those, uh, recognitions and, uh, so forth, so. We'll, uh, look forward to submissions for next month, so. Okay, moving on, uh, next item is the update and discussion regarding our SCC, uh, soccer exploratory committee. I think we met at least twice, if I remember. Previous, uh, board learning meeting, uh, in September, I believe, we had a request from several parents about the possibility of, uh, starting a soccer program at SCC. We formed an exploratory committee, um, took up several items. Uh, most of the homework that we needed, uh, was completed pretty rapidly. I guess I will defer to a couple of the, uh, board members that were there. I know Tricia was there for one, and David and Scott were there, um.
I think our, our goal was to understand participation numbers, likely participation numbers, and they did a survey, um, that went down to fifth, fifth grade and through eleventh grade and, um, on the chance of offering it for next year, that would be our seniors. Securing space, making sure that it was viable with, with, um, or at least securing the, the the ability to have the space to practice and, and host games. And then the, um, viability numbers-wise of having a boys' and girls' program. And the surveys, uh, came back with good numbers that, that suggest viability. And we told the committee that, the, the parents and the advocates for the, um, for, that we would talk to the board and, the committee would recommend to the board that we move forward.
Comments, David?
So that's about it. One of, one of the things in this, to make sure everybody's clear, this was an additional survey past the first one that they, that they had done. Um, this one was much more thorough, I think. One of the concerns, I think, one of the biggest concerns for some of the students and especially parents was the draw that soccer would take away from other sports and more students it would. Um, and the survey really just found that this was not the case, mostly because the seasons are flipped. Girls and boys versus when some of the girls and boys sports are happening. Uh, we just did not see, um, especially from some of the students that go over some of those other sports, we didn't see them pulling out of the other sports to do soccer instead. It was in addition to. Uh, I think that was one of the big concerns, that it would decimate some of the other sports programs of, if we offered soccer. And that really wasn't the case.
Now, it, it, from what I saw, the survey results, it was showing that we would be drawing more kids that aren't participating in sports programs at the present time into a sports program. And so it didn't seem to be drawing away from our current sports, but adding, adding to. You have comments, Tricia?
Nope, I think you pretty much said it all. It was kind of nice to know that we already have kind of some areas that would, um, be available for them to practice in and, um, and looking at, then it's just, you know, getting that kind of stuck down, so it's exciting.
This is kind of the perfect meeting to talk about this too, because we've been about, how do we offer opportunities for kids? Trap shooting, marching band, soccer. If you don't wanna play football and you don't wanna run cross-country, should you not be able to do anything? If the numbers are there, we should, we should support it, so.
And I think the one thing that we talked about was the money it would take for the startup and support of the program. And I think we're far enough out in the, in the budgeting process that, barring any issues there, I, I think we can come up with, with the money. I think we were talking somewhere between forty and fifty thousand dollars, I think, to get this thing up and running. And then, uh, much less than that to keep it running.
And that's for two sport seasons. And that's a boys' side and a girls' side on opposite ends of the, of the calendar year, so it's not for sport, that's.
And there seemed to be in the survey enough numbers that we would be able to not only field a varsity team, but also a JV team, so.
Doesn't require a lot of, a lot of students to create a soccer team, right? I mean.
I'll bet these would be teams, uh, probably fifteen.
Yeah, I think they said they field eleven, and more than seventeen or eighteen on a team is actually a little cumbersome for them. That gets to be too many.
The state says you can have, I think, up to twenty-five on a team, but it's too many kids for a.
There'd be a lot of students.
I mean, everything, everything looked good. You know, they had the students saying that they would participate and, and, uh, we've got, I think, plenty of volunteers, especially in the, the committee members that, that discussed it about volunteering time. You know, we looked at structuring it the same as the other, um, the other sports, um, as far as coaching, staffing, numbers, making sure we got the supervision there. Um, there's a lot of ideas, I think, that came from some of the parents on how we can use some facilities that are already here for doing some things to try and save some money. And then would meet, meet WIAA, um, rules as far as some of the other things, or playing fields and things like that, but.
And I'd like to give kudos to Jason and the parent group for identifying the criteria that we needed to address and, they pulled together a survey, they, they put it out to the right people, they followed up on everything, they answered all the questions that we had. They came up with questions that we should ask, and it was a, it was a very passionate group with a lot of organization to it, so.
Yeah, so I guess at this point, um, we would have a couple of things to do as, A, have the, uh, board support a resolution to, uh, adopt soccer. I guess we would be looking, I think, at this point, seeing if it's possible to get it started possibly next fall. And then we would also have to work out the, the budgetary constraints that we're looking at. And if we can get a recommendation to move forward, then if we need a formal adoption.
At the next meeting.
We could do that in the next meeting. So.
I think.
I don't think we need a motion to move forward.
I think we just need to make sure that it's feasible and we can afford and do the budget, and if all those things are, that would prove it in the next meeting. Or two meetings, whatever it takes.
I was pleasantly surprised with how quickly everything was vetted. You know, just one, you know, I think Jason had to talk to WIAA just to notify them that we, you know, just to make sure that.
That we don't miss a deadline or anything like that.
And then the rest was logistics and, like, budget.
And if we did it for next fall, can we get in schedules and all that kind of stuff?
Yep, it sounded like the most difficult part of it is, is getting it into the middle border conference schedule, because it sounds like there might have to be some re-alignments with the border.
It, it, it wasn't really an issue for us. It was a team that might have to get moved out of the middle border because we're, we're in the middle border. And they have soccer teams that are, um, Cumberland or Hayward that, that might have to re-align somewhere.
Spoke with our conference commissioner. We're a middle border school. We, we would have a problem getting in. It would be more likely asking some others to leave.
But is that, I mean, would they do that next fall?
Yes, yeah, but yeah, he's well aware and he's a full supporter.
And they'll still get them a schedule. They aren't, they aren't gonna be left out.
Right.
But they're just.
They play different teams?
And they'll be our non-conference schedule anyway, because you only play each middle border school in conference once, and you might play them twice a year for your non-conference schedule, so.
Yeah, good work.
Okay, so if, if it's, we're not going to formally adopt it till next month, uh, it's the wishes of the board then that we move forward with this.
Yes.
Check budget out and, uh, go for formal adoption next month.
That's good.
Yeah. Okay, and we will proceed as such. Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is a preliminary discussion regarding district needs and priorities. One of the things, there seems to be some rumbling somewhere of a referendum in our future. Or not even as a board, sure, that's the process to go through, because we don't even know what we're looking for. I think the, to not put the cart before the horse. We're looking for a preliminary discussion of what does a district actually need? Uh, facilities, staffing, uh.
Compensation.
Compensation, uh, financial, uh, needs, uh, from, uh, the district, uh, for the programming, uh, such. And it's hard to start that discussion, uh, but we need to get it started so we can start uh, looking at this, uh, stuff and, uh, get a, get a wish list, a wants list, a needs list together and. And try, once we have that list established, what are the next steps we have to do? There are many steps involved in this, especially if we're gonna move forward and have success in achieving what we're looking for. And I thought tonight, if we could get started in that, some of that discussion, at least put our thinking caps on, what, what do we need? And also, this would be something that we might visit during our retreat coming up in November as, as board members and so on and so forth, so. We're always looking, you know, to give our students the best opportunity that we can and a good education. Trying to treat our staff fairly. And also make sure that our facilities are up to snuff to handle the programming needs that we have, so. I guess, I don't know where to start, who wants to start?
I can start from the wage and benefit. The board has been pretty supportive of the hundred and ten percent of the average for comp. I think we've realized, just economically with the state funding, we're never gonna get there unless we do some sort of excess levy. So I think that was the genesis of it, some of the early discussions. You know, you can do a perpetual excess levy, but then how much do you ask for? Because the, what the wage and benefit has been talking about is to maintain the hundred and ten percent. It's not gonna be two percent a year, it's probably four percent a year in comp increases. And the, how do you do that in perpetuity? And, you know, one of the things that we talked about was why don't we do some sort of a blended thing where you could do some capital improvements in the early years that when that, those projects were done, that money would be available in the subsequent years to fund more and more pay increases so that you could have, you know, go out ten years and say, hey, we have this compensation model. I mean, you can do a compensation model and every year wonder whether or not you're gonna be able to afford it. You wanna go to the team and say, here's what the board is supportive. It requires community support, pass a referendum, and here's the commitment that you're willing to make to your employees. The, you know, we've had a, and I remember the meeting, John Tacman says, you know, Jeff, you've been leading the teacher negotiations for a long time. And the board now expects teachers to be excellent, but you're pretty open that you are paying at the average CISA level. It's like, that's not right. So, you know, I think the board reacted appropriately and said, no, let's, we developed a hundred and ten percent objective. But realistically, I mean, it's not something that we can ever fully achieve without an excess levy referendum. So that was kind of the genesis. And I think the discussion needs to be, well, what other things do we need that we might, so we go to the community and say, hey, you know, we have this objective to be a top ten school, we're gonna achieve that. We wanna make sure we keep it, the teaching staff and the support staff that have caused that to happen. They deserve to be compensated fairly and competitively so that we really get the best teachers and staff in the area. And we have the support and facilities, so community, here's what we're asking you to do. So I think that's where we need to, and now we need to do, as we've done in the past, it's like an internal assessment of what we think. And you can't do that, we've never done that, at least in my short twenty-one year history on the board. We've never done it without talking to the community. And really doing it, kinda against my better judgment, we've had community task groups that were consensus based. It wasn't, you know, a directive from the board, but we had community meetings. And this is what the unanimous recommendation of the community committee that the board ultimately adopted. So I do think there, we do need to engage the community. Everyone's gonna have to vote, so.
Tricia?
Um, not talking about that, but just last time we heard Pete talk and then we heard Shelley. Pete mentioned buses, right? Buses are getting old, but then now they're, they're developing more. So is, is there room in that bus garage, Pete, if you had to add more buses to, to accommodate the new building areas? Or is that bus garage full too? So that's full. So if we had to add more buses to, to accommodate these new areas, I mean, that's huge. And you said the elementary school and accommodating that, the before and after school care, that, it's like that's bursting at the seams. So I think we've got definite needs in a growing district.
Well, I, I, I think there's a, a couple of things that, you know, we've, we've had come before the board that are gifted a talented program. Uh, we've been looking to figure out a way of getting additional staff to support those students. We haven't been able to afford that because we have other staffing needs that seem to crop up as a higher priority. That would be, you know, this would be a method of trying to accomplish that part of it. But also look at additional staff. We needed the high school, middle school, elementary school. Another thing is we, when we passed the last referendum, we looked at moving the, the four K program out of the daycares back into, under the roof of the elementary school. And at that point, it was not feasible based on the additional price. And that might be something that we would revisit either, you know, is it feasible to continue to add onto that building? Or to get the facilities we need, or is it time to, you know, look at a second facility? I don't know. You know, it's, those are still things that we need to consider. And we would definitely need community support. Uh, I think one of the reasons of the success last year is we did, after we brainstormed with our community group, we went out with the survey with, from the Morris Leatherman Company and gauged the community's support of what we were looking at and possible financial consequences of doing so. That would be something that we'd probably wanna do again, in my opinion. I think it was, it definitely set some limits as to what the public was willing to accept and tolerate. But at this point, it would be way too premature. You can't just ask them a blank slate of questions. You need to have some guidelines of what you're looking at. And right now, we're just in the beginning discussion phases. And I don't know if there's any others here that have any other things that we should be looking at. All of these things, we throw on our board, you've got it.
And realistically, Kurt needs to put down on paper what his space needs are gonna be for the next ten years and his staff needs, and so does Pete, so does Shelley. And, I mean, if we need fourteen classrooms, where do they go?
Virtual school bursting as well. Right now they're housed in a, there was a storage room behind their library, so they're. That's something.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I don't know what your needs are, but they're there and they're coming. There's more coming when you look at the enrollment. You're losing a class at ninety-four this year and you're not gaining a class of ninety-four next year.
Just to clarify my point was that virtual school may need to be looked at off-site.
Mm-hmm, but yeah, I mean, the space needs are.
Yeah.
A comprehensive look needs to happen.
Just in terms of the virtual school, Glenn talked to me about that a couple of years ago. However long you've been here, so it's longer than that. So it was just last year, I'm sure. And he had actually talked to Citizen State Bank, the basement of the bank was available. Was, you know, and that was considered as a, and the bank, you know, that was my newspaper office and they almost gave it to us for free. I mean, it was very reasonably priced, so.
No, comments, Stephanie?
Yeah, we looked into that option. My husband did some preliminary drawings of how to redo that space and make that work. But in the end, the rent that they wanted from us was, was more than we were to look at. We didn't have the same deal.
Yeah.
So and the library, the upstairs of the library was another option that we had explored. And then realized that with a lot of the students at the high school taking classes and needing help from some of the online teachers, that our best space was there connected to other teachers that could support those kids. Which is why we've really tried to make that work in the space that we have. So in, in my opinion, as close as we could be to that support system would be ideal. Whatever that may look like in the future.
So, and I don't know what the answer is, but, you know, we've spent millions of dollars on buildings. And I'm just, something I think we need to have, when we survey the community and talk to the community. I would hate to see, you know, and every time we said, well, we're gonna do a building, but, you know, we're gonna ask them separately to do an auditorium. You know, if that failed one time, or we're not gonna ask for an auditorium, I just, I have a personal concern that we maybe need to go to the community to support our capital, but our biggest asset is our people. And, and the chances of losing a referendum because of, you know, one more building thing. Not that we don't need those things, I just, there's a balance there. I think we really have to make sure that we get the support for the, our biggest asset, which is our people.
You know, I'm not sure how that works, but I don't think, you know, we can, we can do the, the facilities referendum. And the operational budget operate, random on one question.
Well, if we, if we, no, you can't, but what we had talked about at the wage and benefit is that you have X million, let's say we do ten million dollar excess levy, which we never would. But let's say it's two million dollar excess levy, and we only needed a million of it to fund the wage part. That gives you a million bucks to spend on capital improvements. For, and then you would, you would spend a million dollars each year until you needed that million and you had those projects done. And you can't, you can't borrow money except with a bond referendum question where you do a levy that's separate. And you can't do an excess levy connected with building a new school as part of the.
Can you use a, an excess levy that's, do you have to earmark it for?
No, you just.
Or it's operational, but is that?
It would be in the way the questions were, it's, the question would be worded.
I mean, we wouldn't say it's a specific purpose.
It'd be the resolution.
Yeah.
The other, the other important factor of getting this done right are the new rules the state has put on to go forward with a referendum. It used to be, if you passed a resolution, that was forty-five days when I started on the board, then it was a seventy-day window. Now they're telling you, you can only do it on the regularly scheduled elections, which would be the primaries and the general elections, both the primary in the spring, which is usually February, the nonpartisan election in April. You can do the primary in August or the general election in November, but the November election is not held every year. So you've got probably, you know, six chances in two years to have this referendum. The other important factor in that is if you put forward a referendum and it fails, probably, I, I think the way the rule's written is you can't come up with it for at least two, if not three years. So you can't come, you can't keep coming back to the citizens anymore. So you've got one shot at it. And if it fails, then you're, you're gonna have to live with the consequences for that period of time. So that's why it's important to get the work done upfront and get the support upfront before you propose this.
And then there's the one more factor, that if you fail, you get frozen at your low spending limit. Which is what for us, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, the law says four hundred and ninety-eight thousand. It was for times our current enrollment. Cause we're at ninety-seven hundred, next year it'll go up to ten thousand per.
Right, so, but we won't do this before next year.
Right.
And then where, at what point are we to that tipping point?
Well, right now it's just a two-year biennium, so they went to ninety-seven hundred and ten thousand for now. So until the next final budget, that's to be determined yet.
That's a catch-up thing, right? So are we still a low, are we a low-spending district at that point?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it's ten thousand, three hundred is the average.
So we need, you know, this is why it's important that we have these important discussions upfront. Because if we fail, if we propose this and we fail, it's not just, oh, we'll wait till next time. There's some real financial consequences for missing this, so. And I know some of the, we've been getting feedback from some of the staff members. They're a little frustrated that we're not immediately going for a referendum in the spring. But I do not think they fully understand the financial consequences if we fail. And we're not just blowing it off, but if we're going to ask for something, we need to know definitely what we're asking for and what the consequences are, both pro and con. So I guess at this point, I don't know if there's anything more we need to discuss at this point.
I do like Scott's comment though about kinda starting that wish list of, hey, this is the facilities that we've, you know, the needs and wants, if you will.
I mean, it's, it's at least a twelve-month, if not an eighteen-month planning process for any referendum, if you wanna do it right. So I guess, yeah, the, the question is, what's step one? Starting with the internal wish list?
Yeah, and I think we can do several things at once, but one of them is, okay, there's, in the next two years, after graduation plus is, we have fifty-five more kids in high school two years from today than we do right now. Does that look like our building, or does that look like something else? And then what follows that, you know, where do they? How long before it starts to maybe take a little dip? Cause we do have a couple of bigger classes that are on the horizon here.
So I was thinking facility study would be one part of it. I met with a company last week that does that for free. Facility study, you know, understand, they do it, they do an interview or they understand your facilities. And I, just in a half hour, he understands, we did a twenty-four million dollar referendum and an eleven million dollar energy investment and a two million dollar energy investment. We're sitting pretty good in that respect. There's always needs, but they could do a, I guess, have a study, working closely, obviously with Brett Green. That'd be facility study, enrollment projection, you know, this, this like the last referendum, right?
And we, we haven't gotten the applied population surveys updated for a couple of cycles. Is that, is that seen as worthwhile or not?
Oh, most definitely, I think this.
But if we do it, we'd have to do a, not just a polish it up. There's, I think we'd have to do the full.
Cause last time, they didn't bother talking to all the clerks to give.
Is anyone building?
How many building permits?
Yeah, they came up with a number without, without asking if any.
New houses have been built.
Yeah, we have to do that on.
Yeah, so, but that was getting an update instead of the full thing.
And then the Morris Leatherman survey can't say enough about how.
But you can't really do that until you have a benchmark of what you're thinking.
Yeah. So I guess at this point, if we can start. Yeah. Yeah. So I guess at this point, uh, if we can start gathering ideas. Hoping that we can get this done, at least we could start looking at a wish list, hopefully by a retreat, which would be the second weekend in November.
And I just want to mention to you, like, I mean, it would be far smaller numbers, but as we get more and more students, we should possibly look at increasing budgets for like STEM areas and CTE areas are gonna have more students and, and more things going through. So those things would need to increase budgetary to accommodate.
Yeah. So there's many things that we have to vet, there's many things that we have to look at, consider. And even as administrators and board members, uh, there are still probably wishes, concerns, needs, expressed by some of our parents out there, community members, and we'll need at some point to hear those also.
Right. Yeah, we haven't, we had a pretty comprehensive list of staff we would hire if we could hire them. And we got three out of fourteen or whatever we got, you know, I mean.
Yes. And I guess the other thing is, you know, we looked at a ten-year plan for facilities. And that was based on not having any significant changes in enrollment growth or anything like that. We continue to grow and we continue to grow at a pretty good rate. So that's something we have to revisit also. So at this point, I guess if we could, you know, possibly start having our administrative team put their wish lists together. The need for staffing needs, uh, facilities needs, uh, programming needs, uh, and wants. Board members can, they have things that they know of that should be added to that list. See if we can start compiling this stuff and see if we can get through. Once we have a list developed, then we can start prioritizing what is important. And where we have to go to get more input if we don't feel that we're getting the whole picture. So I know Pat, you probably have needs and wants also, so you'll have to put that one in. So that would go to all, all the admin team to get, start putting that list together. And give us a chance to start looking at it, considering and vetting and prioritizing and go from there. But if we're gonna go for this thing, let's see that we cover the needs that are necessary to have the district function at the high level that we've become accustomed to. So. Okay. So that's gonna be an ongoing discussion. So if we can get something, uh, thrown together by fourteen fifteenth of November to start with, but that is by no means any definite hard decision. Cause this is something that's gonna be discussed for several months. So if we miss something, we'll still be able to add it. So. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on the start of this discussion? Hearing none, then we'll move on to the next one, which is our board retreat planning. Hopefully, everybody has had a chance to fill out the survey that Lee had sent to everybody and get that back to him.
Said, uh, three of you, and I'm sure you know who you are, three of you need to return it.
I have.
I sent it today.
You did? Okay. That was out this, this morning.
So that, that he is going to use as a basis of, uh, starting our discussions for the retreat. And so your honest input and true feelings are important. Let us iron that out.
Yeah, he wants to cover, you know, general things. It's a comment across all boards, but he also wants to tailor a little bit. So I'll talk to him about this facilities planning, maybe we could dedicate a little time to discuss, discussion on that.
There's, the survey gives you an opportunity, if there are concerns or things that you feel that need to be addressed, either at a board level or as a district level. Survey, we can hope to get that in there and get those discussed at that time. So. I think it's gonna be worthwhile, day, day and a half, time spent. So.
Tim, do you have the questions that you can forward to me to make sure I get it?
I do, you bet. I'll do it tonight or tomorrow morning.
Okay. Then a reminder is, I believe we are meeting, what, five o'clock for dinner. Pier five hundred. And then we will adjourn from dinner and reconvene over at PIPs Center Hudson to start our discussion. And then we will, I think by ten o'clock that evening, we should finish up. And we will reconvene Saturday morning at the PIPs, again at eight, eight AM. So hopefully we'll be done around noon. So it's important that we're all there participating. And I know you all said that you had it on your schedule, so I greatly appreciate that. These are not easy things to put together. Any questions with regards to retreat?
Do you have an idea on where is a good idea to park Hudson?
Yeah, so they now are updating the meters to.
In the evening, they don't do meters in, in the evening.
Meter, that little park right across.
Right across the street in front of the beaches.
Wherever you can, on a Friday.
Beach down there by the pool, you know, where the, uh.
Yeah, it's gonna be tough Friday night.
Yeah.
So they're at three o'clock.
It should be at eight o'clock. I don't think they do meters on Saturday either. They don't do meters on the weekends.
So.
I know the.
Parking in Hudson is always an issue.
The meter person is like a meter Nazi. She looked and saw that I had three minutes left and came back four minutes later and I got a ticket. One minute after my meter expired, I was there two minutes later. You know, and I, it cost fifty cents an hour, twenty-five cents an hour or something like that.
You need a better watch.
I know.
They are, um, gonna tear down the St. Croix E M S garage and put parking there.
And ultimately, they're talking about putting a lamp.
They'd make much better service for the community.
They moved them up.
We won't get into that one, do you? So, okay. So.
Yeah.
If there are any updates with regards to that, we'd, uh, try and do our best, but I think getting there by, uh, five o'clock or a little earlier will be a little easier. The dinner crowd hasn't hit yet. With that, move on to the next item, which is discussion of the updated job descriptions as additions to the SCC employee handbook.
Can I say something about the handbook? It was brought to my attention that we changed the language on our internal posting email, but the language has not been changed in the handbook. It says first consideration on page sixty-seven three times.
Okay. So we took out the word first.
Yeah. And so the emails that Pam has.
Difference between first consideration and consideration.
I think the, that's old language left over from when there were unions, you know, union, first consideration.
Splitting hairs. Correct. Yeah. So it's irrelevant.
Right. But it's, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's sticking in somebody's.
I just think it's relevant. We did, you know, practical stuff, but the handbook hasn't been updated yet. So people need to be patient.
Yep.
Handbook works both ways as well. We don't always enforce.
I was just sending a message.
They don't have a problem with. Yeah, I'm well aware of that. It's probably the same person.
Okay. Uh, then we're back to the job descriptions that were presented. I know there were a hundred and twenty pages of descriptions. I don't know if everybody has had a chance to go through them. I know I did. I got through maybe half of them.
About two years ago, you asked to separate them out of policy. So, so we're working on that. So it is just, uh, not necessary for board approval unless you really want it to be, but that was the reason you wanted to take it out. So we can change them fluidly and update them as applicable. And, um, yeah, a lot of work by a lot of people in the district to, to get that updated and developed. So. And with that goes these job descriptions that are in policy that need to be eliminated. Well, but there still are about a dozen job descriptions.
Twelve fifteen.
It could be developed, which I think I have half a dozen of them yet. I had a long list.
Okay.
So what actions to take?
I guess what we're looking for is, do we want to take these job descriptions? Essentially what we're looking at is possibly adding them to the employee handbook and then.
But does it?
Removing, removing them from district, the district policies.
So for, for agenda N M A under thirteen A, do we need a motion to move them to the employee handbook? Or is this just a informational, we don't need a motion until we get to B where we're gonna remove them?
Correct. It's my understanding. Okay.
We, we don't want to remove the job descriptions, but the policy, it is a policy. So I'm wondering if you should have a motion to kick them out of the handbook and put them into the.
Yeah, that's B.
Well, B is, B is the removal of the policies.
Right.
So do you wanna, do you think there's a separate motion to move them from policy to a handbook?
We rewrite them.
They're not a policy though. They don't.
I, I would think so. I think Kurt's right. Removing is a policy. We just say we're removing them from the policy book.
We read the policy.
Removing is a policy.
Okay. Right.
Do they need to be in the handbook? And then do we need to revise the handbook if we change a policy?
Yeah, I don't know why they would be in the handbook.
The handbook, this is an actual job description handbook in itself. It'll be its own standalone.
Well, it's just that as additions to the S E C.
And we don't.
Not the employee handbook. Not the employee.
Yeah, that's why I wrote a bet.
As additions to the S E C.
Originally, that's where the lawyer told us to put it.
I did not.
Out of the policy book and put them into the ha- employee handbook.
But what you would do is you'd have one page on, each handbook would be unique to the job then, right? You'd give the housekeeping handbook.
Yeah, I would recommend that it be part of the handbook. It's just an all standalone.
Yeah, it seems, we'd like the job description should be its own finder.
Yeah.
And the, this references go to the job description binder, that references go to the binder.
I agree.
Then we're not revising a whole entire doc. We can revise the few pages that needed if we need to revise something.
So the handbook would have a reference point to go to for job descriptions, see job description handbook.